And those will be great, high family wage jobs for construction, but also really great jobs going forward and saving the city the expense of the $100 million because through a public-private partnership, we will be taking on that responsibility as part of our project. Again, if you talk about future generations, this is what the project is for. It's basically, I'm sounding like a PTA person, but it's for the children. It's for the next generation. It's for a community that can have enough tax revenue to pay for police and fire, to pay for all public services, but also to generate a quality of life where when someone comes to visit from the east coast, you want to take them to Redondo Beach, not to Terre Nea or to Santa Monica, or not to Santa Monica, but stay home. Think of all the traffic you take off the streets if you could walk to the waterfront and really have a great reason to be there. Green transit is very important. We're looking at enhanced bikes, enhanced walking. We're using living street standards for our project, green street standards, and we're also investigating water transport options that will provide more access to other beach cities, to Catalina, and to provide additional slips and such, and access for people to come from out of the area. Say if you're a tourist coming in at one of the docks in San Pedro, wouldn't it be great to take an electric boat from San Pedro to Redondo and have them pay their tourist dollars here without ever having to get on a road? Again, project goal number one, improve and enhance the quality of recreation options, beach access, and the enjoyment of the water for residents and visitors. This would be a view as we see of the new lagoon. It will be open. I think the science that we have found shows that this water will recharge about every two days due to a current that prevails in the harbor called the Palos Verdes Echochoc. It's not surprising that the area around this area is not potentially the best today because there currently is no environmental control of any effluent from the waterfront. I think there's more going on than just bird poop under the pier. I won't leave the rest to your imagination. But you have systems there that haven't been upgraded for generations and need to be cleaned up, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done to make that livable. But for the stand-up paddleboarders, for the kayakers, there's a large beach area that would be there that I think is going to be one of the finest launch points anywhere in Southern California. And I think for the toddlers to be there to watch the stand-up paddleboarders and the kayakers, I think it's going to be a wonderful event for people of all ages, including older guys like me. Exercise classes at the waterfront. You know, we'd love to see at the lagoon, starting the day out with yoga and Tai Chi on the beach. We'd love to see sandcastle contests and educational opportunities for the youngsters to learn about the water, to learn about the beach. We'd also love to have Lobster Fest and the other shows that happen at Redondo Beach. And at night, just maybe having movies on the beach with classic movies that are free to all, you know, where you don't have to only be there three months of the year and you don't have to pay a $7 admission. The 5Ks, the bands, the events, I mean, there's so many things we could do. And if you look at our website, you'll see we do this in a number of our properties. For the last 15 years, we have concentrated on place-making as a company. And I can honestly say we haven't done a traditional mall in the last 20 years because the time of the mall has passed, the time of the village is here. Go to the next slide, please. One of the ways we think we can improve access, we can improve more access from the water. I'd love to see La Nikila come and be able to bring some of their big outriggers directly onto the beach occasionally at the lagoon because I think it's a wonderful opportunity for children to learn. But we'd also love to see more transient traffic come into Redondo Beach as a place, if you have a boat in San Francisco, you make Redondo Beach a place you really want to come to because it's now a world-class destination. One of the things what you thought was interesting, if you look at the purple line here, that is the demarcation of the lagoon area under the city's parks map. And you notice that there is actually a street on the west side of the lagoon right now that's outside of the fence. That's a 20-foot-wide street, and the purpose of that street exists so that you can actually drive down that street and then drop an SUP or a kayak off at the hand launch area. That's about a 700-foot walk back, you know, if you're launching from there to the nearest parking spot currently because obviously you can't go through the fence, you know, that surrounds the lagoon. If you go to the next slide, you have the two comparable areas. What we've really done is we've taken the street that's currently on the seaward side, we've moved it to the landward side. We've actually maintained the same area, and if you include the expanded water area, as you can see in that little almost triangle to the lower right part of the slide, our new lagoon area actually has about 10,000 feet more area than the old lagoon does. And it does include, you know, sidewalks and such. We have netted out the buildings that would be in the lagoon that essentially would be applicable to lagoon activities like stand-up paddleboard rental or some food services in the lagoon, all of which we think are comparable or compatible under the city's ordinance in terms of density because we, in the lagoon for that type of zoning, we're only about a third of the allowable density for those kind of commercial uses. Again, if you look at the numbers here, it's about 10,000 feet more in terms of area if you include the new expanded swimming area. In terms of a walk to a beach, we go from about 399 feet to reduce that area about 233 feet. SUP to water, we cut that down by about two-thirds. If you go to the next slide, what you can see again is there's sort of the barrier that exists at the lagoon because you have to walk around it. You can't walk through it. In our program, you'd actually be able to walk straight from your drop-off area to the sand and launch in a very quick fashion. This slide shows a lot of the areas around the lagoon, which includes the drop-off area. Our thought, when we talk about lockers, we'll have someone like a paddleboard operator who can actually watch your SUP for you or whatever your human-powered vehicle is while you're parking the car. It's an easy drop-off. And we actually have been up in markets like Vancouver, British Columbia to see both bicycle drop-offs and boat drop-offs at the waterfront which can easily be incorporated. You can see we still have showers. We have public meeting areas. We have play areas for the children. We have stage areas for bands and for movies at night. And just an awful lot of both softscape and hardscape areas, which we'll get into a little bit later in the presentation, to talk about how to really create great stuff so that even the grandparents can have a great time. You don't need to get on the sand to enjoy the waterfront. You can be sitting there at stadium seating and theater-style seating up there and just have a wonderful view of the waterfront, watch people having a great time. So again, the quality and enjoyment, you can see a before and after from the sea, from the water side of the lagoon. Next slide, please. These are just a couple of before and afters taken at the same spot. Again, if you look at the top picture, that's the existing parking lot. You do see some views. We're taking these pictures at human scale, standing up or not 30 feet on a ladder. But basically, what you're seeing is a view of what the new park will look like and access versus just the parking lot. Again, reducing surface parking from 500,000 feet to about 135,000. Again, one more of our open park areas. This right now would simply be open parking lot area, but turning it into a really usable area by collapsing those parking areas and putting them in a parking structure. Public art is going to be a very important part of our project. We'll have throughout the project sculptures and mosaics, and we have ideas to go from recreating ancient Roman mosaics in front of shops, you know, or restaurants. To the next one here, this would be one of our signature sculptures. This is called "A Spire." It's a free ascent of a man and a woman doing a free ascent. That's about a 35-foot tall sculpture that we think would be a great centerpiece to some of our public areas. We also think there's great opportunities for education on the waterfront. This was taken, I took this up at the Project for Public Spaces Conference in Vancouver, British Columbia. But you have an opportunity to talk about the history. You can do it with written. You can do it with hotspots, you know, electronically. But there's just an awful lot of things you can do to improve that education. Goal number two, improving the north-south access through the project. And again, very quickly, this is the waterfront. That is Basin III. And you can see back in the day there were six-story buildings, four-story buildings, three-story buildings, and there was a direct connector north-south through the project. And you can even see the shape of the streets here where Redondo got its name. All the water, all the roads came to the waterfront, almost as like the spokes of a wheel. That has changed. But we think we can recreate it by adding better access north-south, as you can see here. Right now, you have conflicts with pedestrian and bikes. The bikes now get moved to their own separate level. There's a two-level north-south connector road and then a separate pedestrian area. And as you can just see off to the right of that slide, as you're driving down there, you've got some of the most beautiful views of the basin that are denied people today because you simply can't get north or south in a vehicle. Again, walking along the waterfront, you have a large rock wall, large retaining wall. We have to raise our site due to sea level rise. So we're taking that concrete expanse and turning it into a much more human-scale, walkable, park-like setting that we think is going to be something that all residents of Redondo Beach are going to really enjoy. Again, parking lot and our new street. This would be the new waterfront street. Again, the scale and density is very similar to what you currently have in Riviera Village and other, this would be like a Carmel, you know, Ocean Avenue in a way, but really scaled and architecturally designed for the community of Redondo Beach. Better north-south access, including over our new bridge. So this would be across the Cantilever Bridge that would exist in Basin III, again, giving pedestrians and bikes another way to get north-south in a very efficient manner. And as you can see from here, both from the sea and from land, we've created new pedestrian pathways, walkways, and vehicle access to really improve access. So right now, if you're in the south part of the center and the parking deck is full, your only choice is to take your car, go out to Catalina, go all around, and come back to the north. Here, you'll be able just to go straight north and go either to the Zuliger Deck or our deck on the north part of the site. We'll be using smart parking solutions. So hopefully, as you go, you'll be understanding exactly where those parking stages will be available. And we can direct them actually over to the one across the street by the hotel that's never used, you know. So it's a matter of information and organizing parking as much as anything. Goal number three, recreate the Redondo Beach waterfront as a major South Bay destination for residents and visitors alike. This was a thriving area. This is the place my mother-in-law got engaged in, 1939. This is a spot where great things can happen for the community that aren't happening today. And I think by adding things like the public marketplace, the public market will be unique to the South Bay. This is where you'll get your fresh fish, your meat, your vegetables, all manner of things. This is where you'll see public art on display. This is the kind of spot that, again, very similar to the ferry building in San Francisco or the Oxbow Market in Napa, or maybe the Granville Island Public Market in Vancouver, B.C., really will become a wonderful gathering place for the community. The beach hotel, you can see the existing view. This was taken generally from Kincaid's versus what the new look would be. Very similar in terms of massing and design, but actually, I think upgrading the uses by adding a really nice boutique hotel and upgrading the buildings on the waterfront that all must be upgraded because they've reached the end of their useful life. Again, the street in the center of the project going down, this would be Waterfront Way. Great walkability, great parks. We think living streets and green streets are the most important feature a project can have going forward with a great mix of restaurants and some retail shops and boutiques to make it interesting and charming for people to walk. We do have a very small specialty theater. For those of you who have gone to theaters like IPEC or Synopolis, these are very different than your typical theater. They actually have full-service liquor sales. They also have restaurants. The biggest theater is only about 80 seats, fully reclining. It's all reservation. So it actually is the kind of theater that brings my wife back to the theater, and that's great because I love taking her on a date. So the idea would be, can you reimagine your waterfront? Can we think of ways that the waterfront can be better? What we tried to do is we tried to make it, we tried to balance having enough revenue to be able to pay for all the things that are wrong, having enough scale so that we could attract the best quality restaurants and shops, not unduly high-end, but the most creative chef-driven restaurant concepts, you know, a really great boutique hotel, not settling for second best because all you're adding are just a few eateries and a flat parking lot. If you can do that, we'd love to send you on the next part of this presentation because what I'd like now to do is to introduce people who are very much smarter and more talented than I am. That may not be surprising to many of you in the room. But what I would like to say next, I'd like to introduce Callison Architects. Amber is one of, I think, the world's experts in sustainable design and construction, and she'll talk about sustainability and then gone over to our place-making efforts and our architectural efforts for the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Quite an introduction. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, and thank you for the public for participating tonight. As Fred mentioned, my name is Amber Rocheneau, and I lead Performance Driven Design for Callison RTKL.
Yeah, why don't you just give a...
Now might be a good time to take a five-minute break.
Oh.
Just so that all members of the council hear all parts of the public hearing.
Yeah, okay. Hold on. Stop the timer.
I did. I did.
Okay.
You may want to just take a five-minute break.
Well, maybe she'll be right back. Okay. Five minutes could mean a half hour, though. Okay.
Motion to recess for five minutes.
Motion to recess for five minutes means ten. Keep your seats. Sorry. Hello, everyone. Hello? Can we have our seats, please? Take our seats. Hello, everyone. Help me out, Stephen.
Mr. Mayor.
Hello.
Mr. Mayor, we just need a motion to reconvene the public hearing.
Yeah, the motion and a roll call.
Correct. A motion to reconvene the public hearing and a roll call. That's fine. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Barbie?
Here.
Member Brand is recused. Councilmember Horvath?
Here.
Councilmember San Marco?
Here.
Councilmember MD?
Here.
Mayor Aspel.
Okay, we are back, and you can start the timer now, and everybody can hush a little bit, then we're off. Go ahead, Amber.
There we go. So again, my name is Amber Rocheneau. I am the head of Performance Driven Design for Callison RTKL. We design sustainable, we work to analyze the sustainable strategies for buildings, interiors, and communities across our global practice with a performance-based approach. We are a global firm of 2,000 professionals across 18 offices and have ranked in the top 10 architectural firms by Architectural Record and in the top 10 green giants firms by E&amp;R Magazine. Next slide, please. I have been working on this project for almost four years. I am excited to share what we at the direction of CenterCal have been assessing for this exceptional location and project. We are in one of the most attractive climates on the planet. We have mild winters and glorious summers, even with gloom-joom. Gloom-gloom. Our goal is to use what Mother Nature has given us and not fight her. To do this, CenterCal has committed to creating a framework to assess different sustainable strategies and their benefits. The things that we are looking at are how do we lower our carbon emissions, how to reduce energy consumption, consume water more mindfully, reduce waste leaving the site, and utilize LEED campus to help the tenants achieve these goals and ourselves on the project site. We want increased quality for green space. We want to use passive energy strategies and use what Mother Nature gave us, as I mentioned. Efficient lighting sources to reduce ambient glare, reduce congestion and use complete streets. We're looking at restoration. We're looking at composting. We're looking at alternative energy production and assessing net-zero feasibility. The framework that CenterCal has come up with looks at taking waste that is generated in one area and using it instead of virgin materials in another. The framework will be enforced by the city, but we are committed to completing the LEED campus framework or certification for this site. What that does, and for those of you that are unfamiliar with LEED, LEED is the Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. It's administered by the USGBC and has been in existence since 1993. Callison RTKL has over 100 certified projects, with 60% of those projects achieving gold or platinum, the highest levels of certification. This rating system looks holistically at a project or site. What the campus approach does is allows the developer to certify a basket of credits that are available to any other project that comes in, meaning our tenants. So therefore, we're helping with that cycle of improving the sustainability of the site and using that as a metric on how we're doing. This looks at location and transportation opportunities, sustainable sites, water efficiency, energy and atmosphere impacts, materials and resources, as well as the indoor air quality. It rewards for innovation and design credits as well as regional priority credits. LEED campus provides the credits, and CenterCal has agreed for these to show the proof that we are meeting the framework that we've set out in our project thus far. This facilitates projects in achieving their LEED certification so the whole site can be more sustainable. The credits are automatically usable for LEED projects within the LEED boundary and are a way for us to prove that we're doing what we said we would do. That's taking a look at the site-wide options and site-wide credits. Now, I'd like to talk about stormwater a little bit. One of the things that Fred had talked about was that there's currently no filtration at all right now. The pictures on the left-hand side of this screen are actually taken from the waterfront. You see water pouring directly into the ocean. You see flooding. You see big puddles that might be fun for kids to splash in, but maybe not necessarily so fun for other types of activities. What we want to move from is that water dumping directly into the ocean and contributing to the pollution problem into actually cleaning up that water. Our project will treat over 475,000 gallons of water and filter it to remove 85% of the total suspended solids, 95% of motor oil, 50% of copper, 69% of zinc, and many other contaminants. We are doing that through modulated wetlands and biofiltration. What we're doing is actually making our landscape and our open spaces actually function and treat that runoff. They're not just pretty places. They're actually functioning and performing that benefit to the ocean and to the community. We've actually reduced our imperviousness by 5%, and this is some of the things that Diego will spend a little bit more time talking to you about in a moment. Speaking of water, we also wanted to talk about water use in general on the project. One of the things that we've been tasked with is actually using water for appropriate uses, not using potable water for something that does not need potable water. That's an area that we're spending a lot of time on, both indoor and outdoor. In 2013, the city of Redondo used approximately 30 million gallons of water, and 80% of that water was used for irrigating parks and medians. So I'm sure you've all throughout, you know, living in Southern California, seen those days where the sprinklers are on and it is actually raining. That's not a good thing. We want to mitigate those things with smart irrigation devices, moisture control, and weather-based sensing. We are looking to use low-consuming water fixtures and looking at how our processed water can be reused. I'm sure many of you have also heard the state estimates that approximately 17% of the state energy is consumed with moving water as part of our full energy budget. So the next up is energy. Again, looking at how we can use what Mother Nature is giving us. We have a lot of sun and a lot of wind that we are able to use. We've got the crashing of the oceans, and we've got a lot of strategies in between those. Our first task is to reduce the energy loads. Our buildings are meant to actually reduce from what Title 24 already is. And Title 24 is a pretty high standard. What we like to say is that it's engineering without engines, that we are looking at those passive systems that reduce those carbon emissions and actually make those buildings function with the natural climate in mind. We look to use those waste products, heat from one system that we can use in another system. An example of that would be a cogeneration site where you're using excess heat from heating or cooling of a building or space and using that to heat hot water for another space, instead of using that heat and trying to use that energy twice, being more mindful and using those together. We're looking at LED lightings that now have a tunable white to them, so it doesn't have that bluish glare that can ruin the circadian rhythms and disrupt our sleep and all those kind of things that are difficult. We can actually tune what color that white light is so that it is most pleasing and appropriate for the time of day that those lights would be used. Imagine if this site, or one of the things that we have imagined is if this site could be an area of refuge as well, looking at microgrid technologies, solar panels, solar thermal, battery storage, and fuel cells like the bloom box is pictured here. All of those types of strategies are on the table, and we are seriously looking at how best to implement those strategies and what partnerships we can bring to make those actually function here at the waterfront. Next slide, please. One of the other areas of waste that I just talked about, but this is more concrete waste, is actually our food waste and the waste leaving the site. One of the biggest things to reduce carbon emissions is transportation in any given city. By using the waste on-site, that reduces the truck trips that are needed to take that waste off-site. So some of the things that we're looking at is composting in the food hall as well as construction waste diversion rates of at least 80%. We want to have the landfill organic matter for compost and recyclables in the same area. We don't want you to have to go look around for one. We want them all together so that it makes an easy choice with clear graphics to help us attain that goal of reducing that waste that needs to be taken off-site. We are also looking at low-emitting materials and healthy materials, as well as a microbial digester, which you see in the upper left-hand corner, which actually takes some of that waste, helps the microbes break it down, and then we can use that gas that is used for actual cooking fuel and those sort of things. So making that waste work for us and keep it on-site. Next slide, please. One of the other things that gets overlooked sometimes when we talk about sustainability, we always focus on the building and the site and our density and uses and how we can use waste from one to the other. But one of the pieces that I spend a lot of time thinking about is the health and wellness of the people that are using our buildings and projects and communities. The project here provides area for respite as well as active play. It has interesting streetscapes to encourage walking and biking. It has dynamic water choices for enjoyment and local and healthy food options. We also took care to maximize open spaces that fill our inherent need for biophilic places and will nourish our mind, body, and soul for residents and visitors alike. You have seen many renderings, and here's one more. It may look like it's just a pretty picture, but what they're really illustrating is a strong commitment to dynamic and sustainable revitalization of the Redondo Beach waterfront through adaptive and native landscape use, through drip irrigation, through optimized materials, through healthy outdoor spaces, active streetscapes and lifestyle that tunable. materials, through healthy outdoor spaces, active streetscapes and lifestyle, that tunable white LED that I was talking about, interesting pedestrian zone, and a mix of uses, as well as a pedestrian dominant area that will be a walkable gem for this area. Thank you for your time tonight. Julie and Diego will now walk you through the landscape design. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Julie Brinkerhoff Jacobs, President of Lifescapes International. We are a Southern California-based landscape architectural design firm, and we are honored to be here and honored to be responsible for delivering a beautiful environment for the Redondo Beach waterfront. As a family of professionals of 40 people with over 55 years of experience, we remain steadfast in the belief that beauty is great and good for a community and also believe that we are steadfast in our mantra, which is we create beautiful gardens for people to love and to enjoy. We have long been part of the signature of CenterCal properties, over 12 years now. We consider ourselves an essential part of all of our clients' brand, and we do this by creating beautiful and wonderful destinations. I want to inform you of a few projects with which you might be familiar. One of those significant projects is the repositioning and renovation of the historic Fountain Blue Hotel in Miami. Another one is the San Diego Bayfront Hilton, which was also a repositioning of a waterfront property along a public promenade. And for the past two years, again, we've been honored in designing the rotating garden scenes at Rockefeller Center. And for those projects that are a little bit closer to Southern California, I am sure that you have hopefully visited the point. We did the landscape design for that project for Pacific City and Huntington Beach and many, many others around the neighborhood and across the world. Now I'd like to introduce you to Diego Alessi, who is our representative landscape architect responsible for much of what the landscape...
Mrs. Aspel.
Sorry.
Mrs. Aspel bothering me.
And he, along with many of the other members of the Lifescapes team, have worked diligently to delivering an exceptional, exceptional community experience for the waterfront. He shall now describe to you in detail the six guiding principles that are essential in creating the waterfront experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Good evening, council members, staff, and all the public present this evening. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present the landscape to you tonight. My name is, as Julie mentioned, Diego Alessi. I'm a landscape architect, and I've been practicing landscape architecture for 25 years, and within those 25 years, 15 of them have been dedicated to mixed-use projects, retail projects, and hospitality. And so I also must mention, as something has someone had said before, I am a local Los Angelino. I grew up and born and raised in Hollywood, and as a child, I spent quite a bit of time in Redondo Beach fishing the pier, and as an adult, surfing the South Bay, and now as a professional, working on this beautiful project. I've been also a part of this amazing CenterCal team since the RFQ in 2012 and have really firsthand seen the evolution of the project and have also been part of all the hard work that has gone into this wonderful and compelling project. I've also been fortunate and had the pleasure of working on several of the projects that Julie had mentioned, and with that, I've learned and understand what it takes to make projects like that successful. And of course, with working with CenterCal for so many years, I have seen how much commitment they've put into creating these projects. I've also seen how they work so hard to accommodate community needs, and most of all, they dedicate themselves to quality and set themselves apart for many developers that we have worked with in the past. Tonight, I'd like to walk you through the design principles that Julie had mentioned and prescribe to you the project on how these guiding principles lead us to good design solutions. And then I will touch on the topics that inspired us through the design process and how we've captured the spirit and soul of Redondo Beach waterfront. And lastly, we'll look at the overall site plan, and we'll identify key design areas that really provide us the moments and the interaction of design and principles and inspiration that I will describe to you and create a complete and thoughtful design. When we start any project, it's important really for us as landscape architects to really set up a checks and balances, if you will, to ensure that what we are designing in a property is well-thought-out and thoroughly takes advantage of the project's characteristics. Our first principle, as is understood by many, is the views. Now, I want to be very clear that we are trying to show you what the on-site situation is. I realize there'll be many thoughts further on in the evening about preserving the view corridors, and of course, we've done a wonderful job at doing that, but I really want to speak to mostly about the views itself. It really isn't hard to understand that the Pacific Ocean is our primary asset on the project, and much like Fred, growing up in Los Angeles as I did, I too came to the Redondo Beach Pier, coming as a kid, fishing with my dad and going to the beach, and I have fond memories of actually spending time on the pier, selecting some crabs and having it cooked in front of me and sitting on one of the picnic benches there on the pier and enjoying that. And one of the things that I always remember, and I still do, are the views that we had from the pier and down to the South Bay and also PV. And so some of those things are important as we design this, and the views are important for us to create a project that takes advantage of them and inspires the design and focuses the venues to the ocean and as well as the public spaces, taking advantage of those and expressing them to the ocean views. Next slide. Street atmosphere. This is a term that should really become a designer's philosophy, to be honest with you. It was coined by a brilliant designer, James Perezzi. Its meaning is defined by creating an active street scene through architecture, generous and well-amenitized sidewalks, you know, that has compelling landscape, and that combined is a walkable environment where streets become experiences and desirable retail opportunities. Slide. The third principle, of course, is authenticity, and commonly, this is used in design world. It means different things to different people. But how we use it in the context of the waterfront is establish a sense of place, but designing a project that is well-grounded in the Southern California experience and is well-rooted in the character and attitude of Redondo Beach and the surrounding beach communities. The fourth is placemaking, and I assume we've all heard that term before, and as landscape architects, we truly, placemaking is 24/7 to us. We are always tasked with providing environments for people to use and enjoy and strive for our efforts to create memorable experiences. And here at the waterfront, we have set forth in our design intent to provide those experiences with multi-use activities and open spaces for recreation and play, as well as designating spaces for community events and interaction. Next slide. The fifth principle is the outdoor living room. This design principle can easily be number one with what it means to CenterCal. However, it is put here, really, essentially to encompass what we've been talking about here, is this celebrating place and providing opportunity in the design to gather amongst friends and neighbors in what could be the heart of the community. Next slide. The sixth and final principle is landscape design, and certainly not the least of all these design principles. And I use, it's important to note that appropriate landscape is critical to the success of the project, because as you all know, we're facing a water crisis, and we may not come out of it for quite some time, and we need to be towards the land. Likewise, as mentioned by Amber earlier, we must be considerate of what goes out to our oceans and be mindful of the healthy environment. Therefore, we will be designing landscapes that are sensitive to water usage, complementary to the site location, and that is comprised of drought-tollant coastal plant materials as well as the use of natives whenever possible. Design will be, will use a variety of ornamental and vertical planting as well, and will use seasonal annual color where appropriate. The landscape design will adhere to sustainable practices, as mentioned by Amber earlier, and will have a strong emphasis on good watering practices. Our first, and as through the design process, what's important for us too is understanding the, creating the inspiration for a project, and it's not hard to note that recreation is our primary focus here and what inspired us. We want to be sure that we capture and preserve how people currently use the site and stimulate others that currently don't. And likewise, all the recreation really to us means fun, and it means outdoors, and what a better place to provide that for people than the waterfront. The design will create recreational lifestyles with the new and improved lagoon, the bike paths that we spoke about earlier, the boardwalk, and will encourage play for all ages. The project uses recreation as a 24/7 attitude. The second inspiration and topic for design is expectation for visitors of a project like this is entertainment. Today's view on dining experience is that it provides an entertainment value, and how better to encourage that idea with multiple dining opportunities on this project, both indoors and out, from white tablecloths to picnic benches. Entertainment should reach all ages and demographics and should create memorable experiences by introducing children's play areas, communal lounge spaces, animated water features, art and public plazas. The project should also be designed to provide entertainment through live and seasonal concert events, as well as provide opportunities for local street performances. And finally, our last inspiration, which captures the spirit of place, is community. Community encourages human interaction and sharing. The design should have flexible flexibility in event planning and seasonal opportunities. The design should also have the ability to provide local and educational opportunities and reach to a broader audience. Next slide. And now we move on to the site plan. The site plan is comprised of the north and south district, as we all know. The north is laid out in a more village-like fashion, as we've spoken about earlier, and the south is really comprised of the pier plaza and more of a pedestrian experience with the hotel being the primary focus on the north side. The north village has strong connectivities, obviously, to the south with our bridges, our vehicular access, and pedestrian circulation is obviously a key component to it. The areas described in the A bubbles are really the street atmosphere concepts that we spoke about earlier. The design in these areas are intended to create interesting streetscapes and vibrant pedestrian zones with the use of unique site furniture, pottery, and landscaping, as well as lighting components. The B zones here are activated energy zones, which are basically set up at intersections and inappropriate sightlines. They also encourage activity and energy by the use of restaurant patios and public spaces and plazas and low-water usage, water features. The B zones are the landscape street districts, and the intent here is really to have a variety of landscape materials that express different attitudes with the street, however, using a unifying thread of the under-story plantings to really create a cohesive landscape expression throughout the project. The D bubbles are the significant public spaces, and we've talked about them in quite detail previously with Fred and others. However, these spaces, we're absolutely trying to take advantage of the views and encourage multiple uses that are oriented to the ocean and are designed as living rooms that are generous, have generously walking areas, have kid play zones, and are open to gathering areas. The F zone, as will be described a little bit later, is really the landscape features that interface the architectural buildings. You will hear more about that in a moment from our architects. But the design direction here and in around the buildings should be a complementary to the architectural character and will play a seamless role in the project's execution. I'd like to conclude really with a thought as being an Angelino and someone who has spent quite a bit of time with this project. I've, as I said, have come here as a child and as an adult and now as a professional, and what I think the site is in need of is an opportunity to become relevant to today's lifestyle and attitude. The site is in need of people creating lasting memories, like my own, and ones for my own children, and for local residents to call this project their own. I hope that the council will vote in favor of the project and not so much for the project itself, for the people that will benefit it, because after all, the beauty of the project would be nothing without them. Thank you very much, and I would like to now turn over the presentation to the architect,
Thanks, Diego, and thank you all for listening to this long presentation. I, along with Amber...
Name for the record?
Oh, sorry. My name is Rick Philippe, and I'm a senior architect, designer, and planner with Calis and RTKL, along with Amber and as well as the rest of the design team. We've been working on this project for approximately four years. Next slide. When CenterCal originally hired us, one of the things that they looked at was our portfolio of waterfront projects across the world. We've done projects from San Diego to Seattle, from California to Florida, from Asia to the Middle East, of all different scales, very small intimate projects to large-scale waterfront projects as well. Next slide. CenterCal also engaged us, our services, because of our sympathetic design approach and how it would mesh well with their goal of rebuilding a beach community. At Calis and, we do not have an architectural style. When you look at our projects, they're not, they don't basically speak a specific design style that's representative of our firm, but rather, we look at the context, we look at the environment, we look at the specific projects, and then we do studies and then come up with a rationale for a specific design. We approach each project with, based on its unique requirements, its unique inhabitants, and its specific context. When the complete, and when the waterfront is complete, it won't be a Calis and project. It will be a Redondo Beach project, and that's our goal, to really be a part of this environment. Next slide, please. So when we start the story, we like to come up with a rationale, particularly with the projects that is this complex. What we did, we actually came up with a backstory, which is what if, what would have happened had storms and fires and neglect over the years not taken away what was once a vital, vibrant downtown for Redondo Beach? So by using that kind of concept, it allowed us to think through all of our design decisions moving forward as to how do we bring back something that was lost over time? So really, basically, our concept was what if the Redondo Beach waterfront had not been destroyed? I mean, what would be here today? How would it have developed and changed over the last 100 years? So it's not an easy task, but that's one that we like to, again, create some challenges for ourselves. Next slide, please. So what we did was, whenever we started a project, we look for architectural inspiration, and it can come from different forms. As I said, it comes from the context of the environment, but it also comes from that kind of history that's involved in this specific area. Next slide. So our first approach is to look at the history of a project. I mean, what was there at one time? As I said, it's been lost over time, but it does inform the design team on how the space was used and how it was, I mean, Diego talked about how much, as did Fred, how at one point, this is a really vibrant waterfront area, and how do we bring that back? And using some clues architecturally, as well as just the way that the spaces were used from the start, helps us inform and move forward into the design. Next slide. When we started this project, CenterCal tasked us with recreating a vital, authentic, village-scale downtown, one that is specifically rooted in Southern California beach community. Fred and Diego just talked a lot about the open spaces and gathering areas that spread across the site, but I also wanted to talk about a new neighborhood street waterfront way that, and how it can become part of a revitalized community. In our design, we work, we always study and gain understanding from what has worked in other communities and use that to inform our design. So what you see here are a number of some of the great American streets. There are some spread out across the country. There's reports every year on identifying the specifics, that actual term, great American streets, but we chose more that were, again, more specifically related to Southern California beach communities and use that as, to gain an understanding on how people use these streets, because really, the buildings are the backdrop for, almost hard to say as an architect, but... the buildings themselves really are the backdrop for the activities and the kind of the way people inhabit the spaces in between the buildings. So next slide. So when we started this project, as I said, we looked at other beachside communities, and what we wanted to do was come up with an overall planning concept that would inform and create an authentic, and that word's thrown around a lot, but really, we wanted to come up with an authentic beachside, kind of village-scale downtown. And so what we did is we collected images across Southern California and to help us inform the way that those other communities have developed over time and how they changed and how they developed and how they kind of morphed into different uses that maybe started 100 years ago and then been carried forward in time to create these vital and vibrant streets. Next slide. So as I said, what we have done, in terms of, now I get to talk about the specific buildings, so these are the edges, if you will, of the outdoor spaces that we've been talking about. So when we started the designs for each of the specific buildings, we looked at, we try to find examples, good examples, historic examples, that tie into the, can again inform us of the architecture that's underlying these great streets. You know, it could be a brick warehouse from the turn of the last century. It could be some of the kind of streamlined Art Deco work that you see a lot of the beach communities up and down the coast. It was really the heyday of a lot of the development of the beach communities. Or in the upper right-hand corner, the old Fox Theater, that actually sat adjacent to this site at one time and could help us recreate and kind of bring back those forms back into the architecture. Or if it's on the lower right, it's, a lot of times you see these, the streets are filled with smaller buildings, kind of pushed together, that create a rich tapestry of materials and colors and opening sizes and things like that, that, thank you, that create, again, that rich environment along the way. Next slide. And then the lower left-hand corner is the Market Hall. Again, what we had considered was what was here at one time? I mean, it was a working, as Fred said earlier, this was once a working beachfront, a working pier, and so there were architectural forms that supported that. And so what we did in the design of the Market Hall, we looked at some of the existing buildings or the previous buildings on the site, as well as other beach communities, for their pier buildings and how that form could then be taken from a working pier form and turned into an open market hall. And again, on the lower right, a hotel, the hotels that were on the site originally had a shingle style, and so we could play from those forms. Or on the upper right, the pier buildings, which had that mid-century kind of playfulness that you saw in the '50s and '60s architecture. And so basically, what I'd like to say was, with careful planning, attention to detail and to history and sustainability, with an abundance of outdoor space and a phenomenal location, we really believe this design, the waterfront, is one that Redondo Beach can be proud of for generations to come. So we're excited by the project, we're obviously emotionally involved with the project, and we hope you are as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it, two more minutes or something? Okay. Okay, that's good. Now it's time for the public to speak. Sure you have that right? Yeah, the public's going to speak, and we have written, we request, and we'll get through them, and then anybody that's here that didn't fill something out can still speak, but keep your eye on those lights, because I know that the majority of you want to get through all these before four in the morning, so that red light goes off, you're going off too. Okay, so I will get them the order that Eleanor handed me. Okay, so the first, I'm going to name two people at a time, so come on and get ready. So the first one is Laura Zahn, and next up is Marnus Smeltzer.
Laura Zahn, various individual, District Four. Us versus them. Who is the "them"? Leaseholders. People with big money who want to make a big profit from public taxpayer-owned land. The city negotiates lease contracts behind closed doors. The taxpaying public never knows how much these leases are for or how long the leases will be until after the fact. We have no say, we have no voice. The leaseholders then hold the city hostage. They control who can use their leased land, what the cost to use that land is, and then they control how much they will eventually sell their leases out for. Why should the taxpayers care? Because it is our taxpayer land that other people now have big controls over. They control who develops the land, what projects will be built or not built, and when the project will be built. The other "them" is project-biased officials. How can two city council members and the mayor vote with an open mind on any project that they really, really want to see built? There is proof that these officials are biased. These project-biased officials are now on the verge of signing the soul of the city away in a 99-year lease. The biggest project-biased official is the mayor. To increase his PAC, spelt P-A-C-K, he hoped the newly-elected councilperson would not be someone who was divisive, meaning someone who does not disagree with him. From what I have seen and heard from Martha Barbie, I think the mayor got in her the third leg to his three-legged stool. Now he can milk the cash cow of Redondo Beach taxpayers. Pink Floyd sang a song called "Us and Them." On the "them" side, we have the project-biased officials and the leaseholders who control taxpayer land. Where is the "us"? Who is watching out for the taxpayers of the city of Redondo Beach?
Okay, Marna, and next up would be Alexandra Wayman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Marnus Smeltzer, and I'm representing the Redondo Beach Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. I'm also a 50-year resident, and before I start, I want to thank you all for what you do and for taking the time to do all this this evening. The Redondo Beach Chamber and Visitors Bureau is very supportive of the waterfront project, and we are pleased that the EIR produced very positive conclusions. The waterfront is a community access asset that requires revenues to maintain it. The CenterCal project provides a funding plan that has been sorely lacking in many years. The waterfront project is an investment in Redondo's future. The project will be 100% sustainable, green project, and experts in the community development agree, in the field of community development, agree that it's a very forward-thinking project. It will improve access to the water, offer enhanced lifestyle, healthy living, and recreational resources. This project will no doubt elevate the quality of life of our community and elevate our property values. The benefits to the waterfront infrastructure is most compelling. The project invests $100 million of extremely critical upgrades to the public infrastructure. This project is the only way to fund these extremely critical upgrades without raising taxes on residents. Finally, I would say this. The waterfront is screaming to be rescued. This project rescues our project from the burden of financing major infrastructure improvements existing in our waterfront today where there is no funding plan. It rescues our city from a pier that must be raised up to rising tide. It rescues our city from a boardwalk that is habitually prone to flooding. It rescues our city from the seaside lagoon that receives onerous fines from the Water Quality Board and threat of permanent closure. It rescues the city from the expense of replacing a crumbling parking lot and buildings that are at the end of their useful life, and it rescues an ugly marina parking lot that on most days is barren and transforms it into, the concrete mass into an inviting seaside village with something for everyone. For all these reasons, the chamber encourages the city to deny this appeal and move forward with the waterfront project. We have been kicking this can for too many years down the road, and it can no longer afford to be put off without real consequences. Thank you all.
Alexandra Wayman. Alexandra, and then next up is Amy Roth.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Aspel, city council members. My name is Alexandra Wayman. I am a representative of UniteHere Local 11, a hotel and restaurant employees' union representing over 20,000 workers in LA and Orange Counties. We represent workers that live and play in the Redondo Beach community, and they will be impacted by the waterfront redevelopment project. We are here to oppose the waterfront redevelopment project and support Jim Light's appeal of the Harbor Commission's approval of the project. In previous hearings and a letter to the mayor and city council members, we have expressed our concerns with the environmental impact report, specifically that the community was not able to comment on the staff-recommended alternative and the boat-launch ramp, Mole B, and the final EIR. We also have serious concerns about the affordability of the hotel accommodations at the proposed boutique hotel for this project. The ACOM market study for the project, which is Appendix O of the draft EIR, explains hotels in the boutique segment are typically concentrated in the luxury, upper-scale, and upscale chain and class categories and have an actual or estimated room rate double the nationwide average. ACOM's conservative estimate is that the daily average room rate for a hotel will start at $230 a night in $2014. Additionally, in their lookbook, CenterCal describes the waterfront as a hub of vitality for the people who choose to live in these affluent communities. These quotes indicated that the proposed hotel will not be affordable, and it does not comply with Article II, Section 30213 of the California Coastal Act. The city and CenterCal have had little public conversation about the in-lu fees that are required by the Redondo Beach Municipal Code for unaffordable guest accommodations that are located in the coastal zone. We are also concerned that the independent business owners currently located at the waterfront will not be able to return once the redevelopment is completed. As currently proposed, the lifestyle amenities that are included in the waterfront redevelopment project will not be affordable to working-class people who want to visit the coastal zone. For these reasons, we ask that you please deny the project as proposed.
Thank you. Okay, Amy, Amy Roth, and then Richard, I'll get my glasses on, Schmitz.
Good evening, Mayor Aspel, members of the council and staff. My name is Amy Roth, I'm a resident of Redondo Beach, and I'm here tonight to support this project. Before, again, I would like to show that my husband works for CenterCal. He's an engineer, and we relocated our lives from the Midwest a number of years ago to come to California. But really, why I'm here tonight is to advocate for my son, who is too young to be here tonight and too young to speak for himself. He is, in fact, with a babysitter tonight that we hired so we could be here to make this statement. We decided to live in California to be near the ocean, and the Redondo Beach Pier is our family's closest access point to the ocean, and we can walk there, it's a little bit of a walk. When my son was a baby, I would take him for walks and try to picnic at the pier, and unfortunately, the tables at the pier are just filthy with bird poop, and I would take lightweight blankets to try to put them down everywhere around where we would be, and it's just impossible. I used to go down to the pier in the mornings, my son would wake very early, and as hard as it is to believe, there is no coffee shop or a muffin to buy down there. I had almost forgotten, but there's just certain places you cannot walk with a stroller because of those high concrete barriers. Your son or your children cannot have any view, and so then they just square him out of the stroller. The lagoon itself is inaccessible. As far as I know, it's a ticketed venue, and normally what happens is we just walk around it. And as a new mom, strangely enough, I get more concerned about safety now, and what I found was that when I would walk through the parking garage, I would speed up because I'm just wondering if this is going to be the day of the earthquake and we're going to be in that parking garage. I will also say I'm fairly uncomfortable in one of the elevators at the parking garage, and so we purposely just walk around it. It isn't even a walkway, we just walk through a grassy area to avoid it. I just don't think this is what our pier really should be. I think we need these infrastructure investments at the pier, and we know it's tens of millions, if not 100-plus million in just infrastructure that is needed. The pier could be a really wonderful place for my son and our family to enjoy, and we definitely would use the lagoon once it's open to the ocean, and our family would get a lot of use out of the movie theater. I'm sure we'd be one of the first groups down there. I know how long in California it takes to put this type of project together. I know this has taken over four years to bring, and so I believe that this will provide a safe and 100% accessible place for our families in Redondo Beach, and I hope we can move forward with this project, and I ask that you deny this appeal.
Thank you. Okay, Richard? And then up would be Pat Stewart.
My name is Richard Schmitz, District One. Mayor Aspel and the respected city council members and fellow residents of Redondo Beach. I'm here as a third-generation South Bay resident to express concerns about the CenterCal project and the rebirth of Redondo Beach. Specifically, as a resident of Redondo Beach, for over a decade, I've seen nothing but stagnation in this city. Back when we voted in Measure G, we democratically chose to redevelop our city and have a rebirth. But the people you see opposing that are for stagnation and continuation of a crumbling city. Instead of having a nice oceanfront, we now also have to look at the AES power plant because they couldn't get everything, excuse me, everything they wanted. We all had a vision of not having to drive to Manhattan Beach to do nice things, of having nice surroundings. We all look forward to progress and having our democratic voices heard and carried out. But that doesn't seem to be the case. Those who support Revitalize, Not Super Size have introduced yet more stagnation, delay, procrastination, and obstructionism into making the waterfront something more than just a left-behind strip mall from the '70s. But instead of lamenting about this mire and the muck that we're all stuck in, I could pick apart any of the five fatal flaws that they presented. It's not that hard, Mr. Jones, I'm sorry, but I could just look at their website and pick apart any of the flawed logic, which says you can't swim in the bay, but you can swim in the bay. Okay, so what do you want? Take away the plunge and let kids swim in the bay, or protect it for stand-up paddlers? Other things as well. 67 slots for trailers they want to defend and park, but they also want to cut down on the traffic that goes in there. How do those trailers get to the 67 spots? Do they drive themselves? They don't have an answer for it. It's just more obstruction, more delay, and nothing else than a bunch of hollow threats. And speaking of hollow threats, I'd like to close with an observation tonight. Mr. Light, by bringing his council from out of town here, in case you all missed it, placed a threat upon the taxpayers and residents of Redondo Beach. If they don't get their way and they don't get the vote they want, they're going to continue to waste our tax dollars, our time, and our future. I can't stand by as a citizen of Redondo Beach and let someone say that to me. Additionally, I would ask that the city council condemn the behavior of Mr. Light and his team by posting pictures of the fire chief's front yard and putting derogatory comments on their website. It's stooping below where they need to be. It's beyond the pale to attack a public citizen and a public servant who would rush into a burning building to save their life just because it doesn't fit their agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Pat Stewart? And then Tommy Farbar?
All right.
Okay, you'll be next. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Pat Stewart. I'm Labor Relations for the Electricians Union, IBW Local 11. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to speak on behalf of the waterfront project. We're very excited to be working with CenterCal on this development, and CenterCal has made a commitment to good jobs on this project. When we say good jobs, we talk about jobs that create careers, and these are jobs that have good benefits, good pay, good wages, the kind of jobs where you can, you know, raise your family, a middle-class living, you can give back to the community. These are the kind of jobs where you can shop, buy houses, pay taxes, put your kids through school, and that's really important. And something that gets kind of lost on projects like this is these projects are an opportunity to change people's lives, and I know that firsthand, because in 1984, my dad was running the freight elevators at Crocker Towers in downtown Los Angeles, and I was a few years out of high school and I was heading in the wrong direction. I was partying, hanging out with the wrong crowd, and apparently, he didn't think that sleeping on the beach all day was a good career for me. So he got me in the trade in Crocker Towers, and it turned my life around and gave me an opportunity to see what pride and responsibility was all about. And, you know, fast forward, my wife and I were able to buy a house in Glendora, California. My kids are growing up, we were able to put my daughter through UCLA-- We were able to put my daughter through UCLA and on her own. She graduated from Western this year with her doctorate, and my son's suffering in his second year at San Diego State University. And these are the kind of things that are important. When you look at a project like this, they really do give people an opportunity to change their lives, giving them good jobs like that. And I know that there's someone out there in this area. We represent 12,000 members in Los Angeles County, a lot of them whom live in the South Bay, and there's someone out there that's going to get that same opportunity on the waterfront project. So let's move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tommy? And then next up is Don Ester.
Good evening, Mayor Aspel and fellow council and city staff and the public that's here this evening. I'll keep my comments brief because I know it's going to be a long night, but my name is Tommy Favre. I represent International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local Union 11, and we're here in full support of the CenterCal project, the waterfront project in Redondo Beach. We feel that this is going to create really good construction, electrical construction jobs. We feel with a lot of the infrastructure that's there right now, it needs upgrading, and we know that for a fact. When you have infrastructure that's been, you know, 40 years, 50 years, you know, old wiring, old conduit, and so forth, it needs to be upgraded. And with this project that brings this good design for the city of Redondo Beach, we feel that this is going to move the city forward. We would love to see this waterfront project move forward, and we urge the city council to vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Okay, next up is Don Ester, and then Joy Corredetti right after her.
Hi, Don Ester, District 2, Redondo Beach resident. I personally signed over 500 people to the CARE initiative, so needless to say, I've talked to a lot of people about this project, residents, and when I was talking to them, I just showed them two pictures. I showed them the little concrete, what we call tunnel, the little concrete tunnel where along harbor that Jim showed, and another picture that just outlined the whole project itself. I showed them those pictures. They looked at them and said, "That's going to be on my waterfront?" They were appalled. They didn't even, then I told them about the cars that were going to have 15,000 additional cars a day on a weekend per day, and then they just, they just signed it. They just could not believe that this was going to happen on our waterfront. There's no doubt that the waterfront needs rescuing. We all know it needs rescuing. It's been deteriorating for decades, and we want to see it revitalized. We want to see it redone, but we don't need to sell out to an oversized, highly dense project that's going to completely crowd out our only waterfront, our only harbor in the South Bay, and also bring this kind of traffic and this kind of quality of life and environmental impacts to our beach community. We just, we don't need to sell out for that. So in light of that, I am asking you to oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Corredetti, and after Joy be Kevin Norton.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council, and staff and neighbors. My name is Joy Corredetti, and I've lived in Redondo Beach for 28 years, both in District 1 and District 2. And being that I love this city so much, I opened up a gift shop right on the international boardwalk, so I see daily what's happening down there on the waterfront. And I must say, I love this city. I'm passionate about this city, and I just want the very best for our community, and I believe that the CenterCal project is wonderful, and I wish that were happening tomorrow. I think Fred Bruning's vision is right on target. I feel that this is going to be an amazing thing for the city. I also want to say, seeing the boardwalk and the pier crumble, I too am very concerned about earthquake. God forbid if there's a problem. I mean, I think that a lot of people could be hurt there, and I think we need to do this quickly, and if we wait for the smallest minutia to appease everybody, it's not going to happen. And I think if we stop this progress going forward, it will take us 10 years to get to this junction point where we are today. So I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, as a loving person in this community, that it really is the right thing for Redondo Beach, and thank you, CenterCal, because I think they're right on. Thanks.
Thank you. Ken Norton, and after Ken is Rebecca Elder.
Good evening. Kevin Norton, Assistant Business Manager with IBW Local 11. No worries. My brother's name's Ken. My parents call me Ken, so it's okay. Anyway, we support this project wholeheartedly. We think it's an excellent project. We're looking forward to participate in it. We had about 40 members that showed up. Many of them were outside. You didn't get to see them inside the room here because it's so small, but they were here. They came out on their own time. They came out, and it wasn't for the lousy pizza that we fed them outside. It was because they support the project, and they think that jobs in their own community and their own neighborhood's important. We had 10 residents of Redondo Beach there. Our members came out tonight. Nine out of 10 of them support the project. One doesn't. What can you do? But we want to move forward with this project. We think it's excellent, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Rebecca Elder? And then Martha Holmes. Rebecca here? Okay, Martha Holmes. After, then Martin Holmes. Martin?
They got to come in from outside.
Okay, we'll give him a few seconds here. Rebecca Elder and Martin. Sue Le, Sue Le, me here?
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I didn't think my paper was going to be in there, so I don't have any prepared, I thought I was going to leave before this, actually. But I have owned a property right near the pier since 1999, and so of course, I'm very concerned about what happens on the waterfront. I want it to be improved. I want it to be revitalized. However, I am very much afraid of the big concrete structures that I think are going to go in there on the pier with the parking structures and with the hotel particularly. So I love, I love the pretty pictures, and I love the idea of a village. I think that's great, the seaside village, but I'm very afraid of the scale of this project. And I think if those big concrete structures could be moved perhaps back to the other side of Harbor Drive, if this, if the A, the electrical plant becomes available, that space becomes available, perhaps parking structures could be put, or some parking structure could be put there. So I really fear that once those concrete structures get in place, then we're stuck with it forever instead of the beautiful views of the Pacific that we now have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Rebecca, come in?
Martin.
Okay, I got, then Martin's up. Martin Holmes, and after that would be Delia Vecchi.
Good evening, mayor, council. My name is Martin Holmes from District 1. CenterCal has isolated themselves from the risk. They have established a shell corporation to protect themselves, Redondo Waterfront LLC, which will get a 99-year lease on our harbor. Existing businesses do not have legally binding conditional leases to protect themselves. CenterCal could sell the project at any time. They have not committed to any minimum ownership period. And then the city gets no rent unless CenterCal has an annual return of 10%. Today, the city has a profit of $3 million from the Harbor Enterprise leases and parking. So businesses are in trouble. Today's business owners in the harbor have leases for around $2 a square foot per month. The city's AECOM financial report says that rent will average $7 to $11 a square foot per month for a $300 million project, but we have heard from Mr. Bruning that this will be a $400 million project, so rent should be even higher. Meanwhile, LA did a financial analysis for ports of call. That concluded that a premium waterfront destination should have rents of $3 to $4 a square foot per month. The average in the South Bay is $2.26. Barney's Beanery pays $3.25. Santa Monica Place is $5, and Third Street Promenade is $7. So you are planning to build a project that must achieve the same level of business success as Third Street Promenade. You're planning to do that in Redondo Beach where we don't have the road or interstate infrastructure. This has been set up to fail. Mayor Aspel, you vetoed a 3 to 2 city council motion to send the project to an advisory vote. Mayor Aspel, you vetoed a 3 to 1 city council motion to analyze CenterCal's financial capabilities. What are we hiding? City neglect of infrastructure led to deteriorating garages that need $18 to $50 million for maintenance. Overall, our harbor needs $37 to $108 million for infrastructure. Unfortunately, the city would rather give our harbor to CenterCal for 99 years than address this infrastructure. We can fix the infrastructure with the $3 million of profit we get from existing businesses and parking, or maybe we could use some of the $800,000 that goes to the Chamber of Commerce. There are ways in a true public-private partnership for the city to pay for the infrastructure, and then CenterCal could have a smaller, more balanced project since we wouldn't be asking them to pay that infrastructure bill. Your own financial advisor, KKN, says that we can raise $54 million for the project. So we could have an economically viable project that isn't huge. We could balance the project. We could revitalize without supersizing. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Okay, Delia. Delia Vecchi, then R.G. Lutz.
Delia Vecchi, Redondo Beach, District 2. Good evening.
Microphone, Delia. There you go.
Like that?
Closer. Pull it forward. You've been there enough.
Don't count. They are counting. They're cheating with me. Okay. Please do not approve and certify tonight the final EIR, and I will use one small example among the most critical reason, hydrology and water quality, and I will use the response from the CDM Smith to my comments. Quotation: "The project site is currently located within a tsunami-induced inundation zone for a tsunami originated in the coastal waters of California, according to the California Government's Office Emergency Services. Although the city has developed an emergency evacuation route and other emergency procedures for coastal areas to address potential risks associated with tsunamis and mitigation is proposed, it is not possible to conclude that the associated risks could be fully mitigated. As such, the residual impact associated with tsunami or such exposure is considered to be significant and unavoidable." Close quotation. Then, it's the best time to remember, all of you again, the Redondo Beach 1988 storm and its damage, with a cost estimated for storm damage and cleanup of about $16 million of $1988 value, where the beaches were flooded, the hotels and business destroyed, and the breakwater broken. That is the reason that all the scientific institutions like NOAA, Pacific, SC, et cetera, are recommending to limit the development close to the coast to avoid loss of life and properties. But CenterCal goes in the opposite direction. Who will pay for the damage when they happen? The elected authorities that would approve the EIR for this project to move forward? Or the city? Or us, the residents? As a taxpayer, I request an answer from the city, and also the response to be publicly posted for all the residents to be aware. I love to see the waterfront revitalized, but know this way, if the city had had a vision, had consolidated AES land with the waterfront, had called for a national and international architectural design competition, and the city had put Redondo Beach in the spotlight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. R.G. Lutz here. Put him in the stack over here again. Okay. Eugene Solomon, and after Eugene, Joan E... Help me. Irene?
I have two bridges.
Irvine, Joan Irvine. I can't know the handwriting. Okay, Eugene, you're up.
Exhibit. Eugene Solomon, District 2. Thank you, councilmen and Mr. Mayor and staff. This is an excruciating evening for all of you, and I very much appreciate all of your time and your effort and all the reports and everything that have gone into all of this. For a person with a hammer, whose only tool is a hammer, everything looks like a nail. And that's what we have here, is CenterCal builds shopping centers, shopping malls. That's all they do. They take the same plan, and they plop it into one place in the northwest, and they call it something kitschy about the northwest. And they take another shopping mall, and they put it by the water, and they call it the waterfront. Streetmost Fear?
Never heard that one before.
I Googled it, and I got the Venetian in Las Vegas. I don't want the Venetian on the harbor. Measure G prohibits or requires that we preserve and enhance the views from Harbor Drive, and I have some exhibits. Here's Harbor Drive. This wall does not preserve and enhance the views from Harbor Drive. This view corridor does not preserve and enhance the views from Harbor Drive. The project is in violation of Measure G. I was walking down to the pier on Sunday night, and I saw people laying in Zoológur Park, watching the sunset. This project does not preserve views from all of Zoológur Park as is required by Measure G. Not largely compliant, but compliant. Largely compliant means invalid, and that's what you have before you, is a project that is invalidated by the zoning. I'm moved by the gentleman who were speaking a little while ago about the jobs and the electrical workers and all the people that are going to have jobs because of this project. We don't need these projects for their jobs. The pier can be revitalized. The pier can be worked on, and many electrical workers and contractors will be hired for that without giving away our lease in the harbor for 99 years. I want to remind Mr. Bruning, if I can, before I run out of time, the dog-friendly remark, it's illegal to bring your dog down to the pier. So it won't be dog-friendly. As far as the AECOM report that Mr. Bruning brought up earlier, he told me in conversation when I met with him that they completely disregard the AECOM report. They have their own numbers, and it doesn't mean anything to them. I'd be more than happy to assert under oath that he told me that, and I have it in my notes. The concierge of the Redondo Crown Plaza Hotel said, "In my 26 years, my view is about to be ruined. What am I going to tell people who want to go and see the ocean and visit the beach? I'm going to have to tell them to go to Hermosa and Manhattan." Please don't allow that to happen. Please certify this appeal and rework this project. Thank you.
Okay, is Joan Irvine here? Joan and Susan Ludwig. Those reading their signature instead of their names. Okay, we'll go over here. Jason Muller? Then after Jason, Kelly Barnes?
Hello, everybody. My name is Jason Muller. I'm a resident. I live in south Redondo Beach with my wife and my one-year-old son. We, I'm speaking on behalf of my young family, and I personally would be very proud to have this project be part of my community, a place where I can come visit, and I have family members that are from England that come fly out here, and I have to like take them to Santa Monica. I have to take them to different places far away, to Terrene, and I'd love to be able to take them to a place that's, with its walkable from my home. I can't wait to kind of be able to visit the seaside lagoon in all of its glory, but also incorporate, you know, all the new technologies that will help improve the project, whether it be, you know, how it incorporates leveraging our architects, our landscape, you know, designers, AECOM's technical studies. leveraging our architects, our landscape designers, AECOM's technical studies. It's fascinating that we hire all these professionals and then we get all the evaluations, then we tell them how it's wrong. If you always want to find a signal in the noise, you'll be able to find it. But if you kind of say, hey, you know what? If you're for the project, I love you. If you're against the project, I love you, because we're all part of Redondo Beach. So don't let this project be a divide. We all love the project. We love the city, and we want to make sure that it moves forward, and we all have our heart in mind. And this project is better because of Jim Light and his team. This project is better because of Fred's kindness and his leadership. I volunteered my own time when I was at USC for free to be able to help sketch the community's ideas on paper. And I went to Fred Bruning's office, and he had the sketches, and they were overlaying them. So you can't say that your voices weren't heard. You can't say that they didn't go to the proper measures. You're talking about, you know, city council does the RFP and does the process, and we vote on it. It goes from 800,000 to 400,000. You know, I'm just saying, enough is enough. You've got to go with, if it feels right, let's do it. And I think it feels right, and I'm just speaking for my young family. So thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Kelly Barnes. Kelly here? Over here, Bruce Ellis. Bruce Ellis, okay. Susan... You know what's... Okay, come on down. And after Susan would be Joseph Sullivan.
I'm a resident at 140 The Village in Redondo Beach, and I'd like to read you my comment. Fred Bruning of Centracal said, "It is important to get it right. Our issue is exactly this: How do you make a great project? One, you limit the majority of the buildings to 15 to 20 feet height or one single story. The buildings we are talking about are building E, D, G, K, J, H, and the north portion of building F. The developers want to make this seamless. It is not seamless to these neighbors without limiting these specific buildings to less than 20 feet high. Our view is the view corridor two in the development plan. We look out over all these proposed structures and are specifically proposing that the development height of these buildings be limited to 20 feet above the current ground level. Our multifamily living dwellings look directly at Captain Kidd's on the rocks and Rubies. We have a specific, special view of the harbor water and can see boats coming in and out of the harbor. In addition, we can see the breakwall in the distance and above the breakwall. The proposed developments of one-story and two-story structures for the buildings identified above is simply too much building and too dense from a height perspective. The current building, Captain Kidd's, identified in the view corridor, is less than 20 feet in height. It has a large, steep, sloping, pitched roof and could easily be 10 to 12-foot-high building. We feel that our request to limit these buildings' heights to 20 feet maximum is in everyone's best interest, as it would keep the development less looking like a mall and more like a coastal destination. The proposed heights are 35, 40, over 50 feet in height. All are almost double what is needed for a one-story development. We so no compelling reason or benefit to make these one-story buildings so high, and ask that you please read our attachment as we have outlined our issues and the view corridors in question in complete detail. We are presenting the summary of our issue. The details of our report we ask to be submitted to the committee for thorough investigation and review." And I have that here. Who do I give that to?
Motion received and filed. You can hand it to the clerk. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, Joseph Sullivan. And next up would be Richard Worsing.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. Thank you for hearing me tonight. My name is Joseph Sullivan. I'm speaking on behalf of the National Electrical Contractors Association of Greater Los Angeles County. We represent approximately 400 electrical contractors across the county, and we strongly support this project. We feel like this has great benefits, both environmentally and in terms of jobs and careers. Of our 400 contractors, many of them are women-owned, minority-owned, and small businesses. And right now, we have a program to mentor and develop minority electricians to become electrical contractors. But the alchemy that makes that conversion happen is good projects like the waterfront, where they're paying prevailing wage, where there's good compliance, and where there's good jobs and good work. We invest a lot into the electricians or the apprentices who become electricians. We have a five-year apprenticeship program. We spend $30,000 per student. They get full family medical at the fourth month. They earn while they learn. They don't pay for anything, not even books or tools. And probably equally as impressive as this is the facility where we train them. We train them at what's called the Net Zero Plus Electrical Training Institute. It's the largest net zero retrofit in the country. In addition to that, it has a state-of-the-art microgrid, which has been replicated by the U.S. military several times. It's an emergency shelter in case of a disaster, because it can island independently of the grid. It's a beta site for new technologies. In short, it's ground zero for sustainable energy. People are coming from all over the country to look at it. And we are training all of our electricians, our contractors, on these new technologies. And from that, we know the impact that a lead project like the waterfront can have or a sustainable project can have. You see it all the time when one house gets solar, the other neighbors get solar as well. But on that, there's all kinds of benefits, from having the right lighting to having the right air, to having the right ambience. If you look at the research, the benefits are innumerable. So we feel like this is going to create great jobs, create great career opportunities, and we feel like the sustainable aspect is something that we can speak to and is going to provide a lot of benefit to the community. So thanks.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next up, Richard Worsing, and then Penny Worsing. Are they here? Richard and Penny. Okay, I'm over here. Barbara Epstein, and then Joanne Turk following her.
Hello, I'm Barbara Epstein, Redondo Beach. I'd like to first start by thanking Ms. MD for your kind reply to my email today. I really appreciate it. We moved down to Redondo from Palos Fuentes after 40 years living there in order to downsize. And the main thing that we wanted to do in Redondo was walk at the waterfront. Open space and public land, public access, has always been a priority for me since I first hiked through the forest preserve as a child in Indiana. Everyone agrees that the waterfront needs upgrading, and the city could have done that a long time ago. There are many ways we could have done it. I have been in contact with the Trust for Public Land, for example. They help communities all the time to create beautiful, special places. They find the funding. They're a nonprofit. They work with the community. There are a lot of solutions that we could have pursued. My primary opposition to the approval of this project is that it constitutes the taking of public land, especially public parklands, and gifting them to a private business. This taking is immoral. How do you plan to compensate the public for the loss of its land? My other objection to this project is that the EIR is fatally flawed, as Mr. Light pointed out in his slide presentation. Many parts of this Centracal project were not approved in the eight public workshops we worked on, so claims that there was public participation and public approval is basically false. The rest of my previous comments should be on record in the EIR. We can work with the city to create a new future for the waterfront without giving it away. Citizens have been offering great ideas for years, but for whatever reason, the city has chosen to ignore them. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Joanne Turk. Okay. After Joanne is Melanie Cohen.
Joanne Turk, and I do live in Manhattan Beach. I've lived there for 45 years, but I've been down in the harbor for 40 years. So as you can see, I don't take to change real easily. However, I'm very excited about this change. I think this is the last best chance to make improvements to the waterfront. If we don't have a boat hoist or boat launch or the hand launch, then we can't make any more improvements. The Coast Commission has told us that. So we see things deteriorating around us, and we don't like it. So Centracal, I think, is the best chance to make improvements to the harbor. And if they walk away, which I don't think they're about to do, they've invested a lot of time and money and effort into this. But there's no good place to put a boat launch, a boat hoist, and the hand launch. But this is the first time I've seen a masterless sea work with someone on their own property, because there's just no good place for it. It's an intrusion almost everywhere, but we know we have to have it, because the boaters deserve it. So MOLB, I believe, is the best opportunity for a hoist and a ramp and a hand launch. We've seen this kind of project trying to move forward for 40 years. Centracal is the first developer to include so many people in the planning process, and I commend them for it. We need to move forward. It's time.
Thank you. Okay. Melanie?
Yes. Just to remind of...
I'm calling Schneider.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Just wanted to tell you that the Dodgers did win this evening, six to nothing.
Yeah, that was a text I got from my wife right when Jim was talking. Thank you.
Okay. Melanie Cohen, District 2. "The South Bay Parkland Conservancy was founded in 2005 at the behest of folks who want to see the AES site and see King Harbor and its immediate confines continue to be available for harbor uses and harbor activities. We are dedicated to leaving a legacy of open space. The EIR report for the Centracal project to develop the Redondo Beach waterfront is being rushed through the approval process. The public has not had sufficient time to review thousands of pages. The South Bay Parkland Conservancy found the EIR responses do not adequately address the following issues: Plantings and promenades of concrete and medians are accepted as open and park space. Increase in greenhouse gas emissions by the opening of Harbor Drive south to Torrance Boulevard and removal of the Walk and Bike Plaza above the pier. No impact is found of increased traffic from the project on residents or the environment. Blocking of public views and access to the harbor from Harbor Drive and Zoolaga Park. Repurposing of public park space and seaside lagoon for concession. Opening seaside lagoon to the harbor, making it unsafe to swim because of water pollution and making it a private beach. Location of the public boat ramp with fewer spaces and lack of public access. Public lands being used for private profit. Unwillingness of Centracal to show Redondo residents the project in a city-acceptable location and lack of Redondo Beach city transparency with the project. Please reject the EIR to remain such for adequate time to address these issues. The definition of a fair hearing is a judicial proceeding that is conducted in such a manner as to conform to fundamental concepts of justice and equality. During a fair hearing, authorities exercise according to the principle of due process of law. Fair hearing means that individuals will have an opportunity to present evidence to support their case. A fair hearing is not necessarily a fair trial, but fairness is still required. It would seem only fair to reject the EIR and to accept the appeal of Jim Light and building a better Redondo and answer these and the many other questions being raised this evening by South Bay residents. Thank you."
Thank you. Okay, is Colleen Schneider here? Colleen Schneider. Okay. Duane Roarbra. Duane, okay. Lawrence Chaves, and then Barry Stark. Good evening.
Lawrence Chaves, Redondo Beach. Greetings, Mayor Aspel, city council, and my fellow Redondo Beach citizens. I'm a current Redondo Beach resident and longtime resident of the South Bay in general, and I'm very familiar with our South Bay community and its upcoming potential developments and our citizens' concerns. And Redondo Beach has faced multiple new developments over these past year or so, and some of them tend to divide our community. First, we halted AES rezoning and selling the power plant. And then a few months ago, I think we halted the Legato development in the Riviera Village. I believe they're now suing us because of that. So this type of behavior is kind of counterproductive to our revitalization plan, and now it's getting expensive and rather exhausting. So now that we have the Centracal waterfront developments turned, it's my understanding voters approved Measure G in 2010, six years ago, and since that time, the community leaders and residents have come together with Centracal to create a plan that meets the needs and the wants of the citizens, and they've tailored back the size of the original plan. I welcome these new developments that will bring life and business to our city, because quite frankly, a large portion of our waterfront and our city has been just sitting as a dormant eyesore for some time now. And this dormant real estate leads to a dormant community. We need to change that. What we have now in the King Harbor is that it's just really an oversized parking lot whose buildings that are there are either short-lived restaurants or they just sit vacant all year round, year after year. Then as you head toward the pier itself, you have restaurants and tchotchke-like shops that are built into storage lockers for boats. And as much as I love Naja's or the Slip Bar, I think we can find a better home for a restaurant rather than a boat storage locker. And then you have Tonys on the pier, who I understand the Crow's Nest is actually slowly leaning into the Pacific itself, because it's sinking into the soft ocean floor under its own weight. And then a few people mentioned the parking lot. You know, I bike under that parking lot quite a bit or walk under it. If anyone who's been under it can see, that parking lot doesn't have a whole lot of life left into it, and I didn't even think about the fact that, you know, an earthquake might come.
Time's up.
Time's up. I urge you, city council, to reject the appeal and support the waterfront. This has been years in the planning.
My brother.
Let's move forward. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. All right. Barry Stark?
Hi, Barry Stark, North Lucia, District 2.
Hi, Barry Stark, North Lucia, District Two. I didn't really plan my speech or anything, but I've kind of, I've learned a little bit since I've come here. And it sounds like a really great project for Centercal, but not so much for the residents. It was interesting, after hearing Jim talk, it reminds me of, who was it? Nancy Pelosi on Obamacare? We are passages, we know what's in it. I just don't think that's the way that we should do business. I've been in Redondo now for about seventeen years and ever since I've been here, it seems like it's one project, you know, heart of the city and all of this stuff, one after another, high density, high density. Now, I like some of the walkways and the boat launching ramp, maybe, if that can be made safe. I don't like all of the mall stuff or the high stuff. I think, as the lady said, keep it to one story. I think that'd be cool. And some really pretty stuff. I think it'll be nice. I don't know where they got the blue water scene for the new lagoon. I don't understand. I've seen blue water in lagoon. I don't really think that'd be safe to be having. If my grandkids came down, I would not let them. I mean, the lagoon, maybe, like it is now, but like that in the harbor? I remember a few years back when we had all those fish dying in there, and I remember helping some of the divers haul out all the crap that's in the bottom of that harbor. I just don't think that's a good place to be swimming. Anyway, for what it's worth, I like that we're doing something, but I think this supersizing thing, like I said, I think that's too much. I think we need to just keep it on a low levels, everybody can see what's going on, and we can have a nice place to enjoy. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for your time. Okay, thanks. Wayne Craig. And after Wayne is Martin Slack.
Good evening, council members. My name's Wayne Craig. I live in District One. I'm a Redondo native, was born here at South Bay Hospital, and I lived here most of my life. This project is way too big. I'm a realtor and a developer, which I know some folks here are kind of wondering why I'm up here against this project. It is not in compliance with Measure G, and as I asked Mr. Bruning at an event recently, it definitely is not. It's too big. There's so much about this project that just doesn't make sense for our city. As a realtor, I help people move into our city almost on a daily basis. My primary business of people buying, selling homes is in Redondo Beach. And I got to tell you, I have no problem taking my clients down there. Last week, last four weeks in a row, my family and I probably eat in three, two to three days a week at various restaurants there. So my thing to the folks here that want to support businesses, put your money where your mouth is. I do, every week. I've been at the Slip Bar, I've been at R10, been at the burrito place, I can't even talk, I'm nervous now, Captain Kidd's, and of course, Quality Seafood. I go there all the time. I live a couple of blocks away. We do need some revitalization. I have no problem with that. I am a developer too. But I think this project in scale is just so big, it doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make any sense because when it was conceived, the AES power plant was not even in play. I think we need to do a timeout here before we give this away for ninety-nine years to a developer who has really no intention of staying in town. Why don't we do this as a combined project, something that, yeah, maybe it'll take another year to figure it out, but it makes absolutely a lot more sense to do it that way. If the developers who are interested in actually working on the harbor project see it having a lot more value as being a harbor, after all, it is called King Harbor, not King Harbor Mall. If we do develop the project, one of the developers who's working on the LA Rams, yeah, the Ram Stadium, have a big interest in it. The same developer actually built the ferry building in San Francisco that you see in all the Centercal material, which they did not build. They love the idea of doing both projects together and actually retaining the character of what we have here, which is a harbor. Obviously, it can be enhanced, we could do more with it, but making this a gigantic retail center does not make sense for that small area. We can do better. We can revitalize the harbor without turning it into a retail shopping area. Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne. Okay, Martin Slack. Martin's now your Tony Hart. Tony Hart. Dave Quinn. Don Zerlip. Are there people in the library or just out front?
I don't think so. It might be in the library.
Okay, I'll keep the papers linked. Okay, David Dimmitt? Laura Duke? Charlie Simansky? Okay, I'll stop. He waited around, I'll stop.
Yeah, I'm getting sleepy now. Charlie Simansky, District One, Irene Avenue. I first moved here in 1982. So Mayor, Council, staff, and fellow residents. By the way, I was one of the founding directors of SBPC and came up with the slogan, "The Legacy of Open Space," modified by Dave Wiggins. And I am hoping that you will deny and reject this appeal. I want to speak out in favor of the currently proposed waterfront development. I think it provides a focal point for those who want to enjoy the waterside as a destination instead of just a pass-through. Living in this area, I want to be able to enjoy the waterfront, and maybe it's only going to be my kids at this rate, but I'd like them to enjoy it too. They're in Paris right now. Paris Middle School, that is. We have a great beach and a bike path and plenty of access for people to enjoy the ocean as it was originally created. Now we can add a modern gathering place for all comers, even people who may be of lower income. Local residents will have a place to bike and walk instead of, they'll be able to go to a place instead of through a place. I have to say, I don't really enjoy Harbor Drive itself, and in particular, the views from Harbor Drive. Providing a walkway and a bikeway where people can climb as a destination and closely experience the ocean and stay enjoyably for several hours is truly priceless. I doubt anybody here spent several hours at our pier. This is a benefit for anyone wanting access to the seaside, especially those of us who live nearby. I find many of the detractions mentioned by those against this development to be ingenuine and spurious. As an example, the pictures that we saw earlier today, many of them were plain asphalt. It's very telling. This project makes sense on many levels. Get rid of the obsolete, dangerous infrastructure, provide money for better services for all of us residents, and maybe even the opportunity for a little civic pride. I don't know how much time I have left.
You've got about a half a minute.
Okay. Now, listen to this quote. "I can never get over, when you're on the beach, how beautiful the sand looks and the water washes it away and straightens it up, and the trees and grass look great." This is Andy Warhol. This is part of the quote you've probably seen. "I think having land and not ruining it is the most beautiful art that anyone could ever want to own." This quote means exactly nothing with respect to our waterfront development. It is somebody espousing nature in its, or natural form. Has nothing to do with land improvements. Andy Warhol's estate is for sale for eighty-five million dollars. He was talking about land in its natural state, not development.
Thank you. Okay, Gary Milak. Joyce New? Paul Moses? And after Paul is Neil Splankowski.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Paul Moses. I live in District Two, Councilman Brands, District. I support Centercal's waterfront proposal. I think it's wonderful. I support it because it is progress with a plan. I believe the plan is in full compliance with Measure G. If anyone disagreed, they had months to file a legal challenge, but there's always tomorrow, isn't there, guys? I understand the impacts of this project, and I understand those are far outweighed by the benefits. After decades of riding my bike past empty parking lots and empty buildings, I look forward to a place where I may stop and actually enjoy something down in the harbor. I've spoke personally with many residents regarding this project. It's true, not everybody is for it, but I've...